Approval meeting of minutes for the meeting of February 23rd, 2012. We have a sponsor?
A sponsor?
Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Smith. Any discussion? If you call the roll, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Zika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Presentations or proclamations? None? Public announcements? None.
City manager's report?
Mayor and council, just one item. When you had your workshop with the Auburn Municipal Power Agency, there was a discussion about the Allen Street power line which would connect the cogeneration facility to Casey Park and Falcon Park and one of our other uses, our public infrastructure uses. We committed to come back with an analysis of the cost of that and the payback period, and we have provided you with some worksheets along those lines. I'll just briefly tell you that the payback period is about 11 years on that project. We would save about $32,000 a year in power costs if we implemented this. The capital cost for the infrastructure to make this happen is about $300,000. So when we add the financing costs in there, and if we assume power rates don't go up with NICEG, then we have about an 11 and a half year payback period. If the council so desires, we can bring this back at a future meeting for formal action to approve the project.
Sure. Let's bring it back at a future meeting for a little more, a little more in discussion if we may, and possibly move it along.
Are there any questions? Mark is here from our engineering department.
I think with the high load, we have to move on and do this at another time.
That's it, Mayor?
Thank you. Presentation petitions and communications?
We have one. From the Office of the Corporation Council, dear mayor and members of council, enclosed, please find for your review Council Resolution Number 26, Removing the Prohibition Accepting Natural Gas Drilling Water at the Wastewater Treatment Plant by the City of Auburn.
Thank you. Seek your resolutions?
None.
Ordances?
None.
Council Resolution Number 26 of 2012, Removing the Prohibition Accepting Natural Gas Drilling Water at the City's Wastewater Treatment Plant. We have a sponsor? Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Greeney.
Council Resolution Number 26 of 2012 by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Greeney. Whereas the Auburn City Council has operated a wastewater treatment plant for many years, and has throughout the years accepted well water from vertical natural gas while drilling. And whereas on July 7th, 2011, Council Resolution Number 94 of 2011 was adopted by the Auburn City Council due to the fact that concerns were communicated to the city council that the acceptance of treated water from the vertical natural gas while drilling might be harmful to the wastewater treatment plant and the environment. And whereas, after additional study and consideration, the Auburn City Council desires to remove the prohibition preventing the wastewater treatment plant from accepting vertical natural gas while drilling water. Based upon observations and further study whereby it has been noted that there has been no damage to the wastewater treatment plant and no damage to the environment as a result of the discharge of this treated water. And whereas, the Auburn City Council recognizes the need to protect the public waterways and to protect the infrastructure of the wastewater treatment plant. And after careful consideration, the Auburn City Council desires to receive vertical natural gas while drilling water in conformity with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and in conformity with the city's current permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And whereas, the Auburn City Council desires to remove this prohibition in order that the wastewater treatment plant be allowed to immediately begin accepting water only from vertical natural gas while drilling and will not accept any water from horizontal while drilling. Said acceptance to be effective immediately. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council, by adoption of this resolution, hereby removes the prohibition accepting vertical natural gas while drilling water at the wastewater treatment plant. The removal of said prohibition shall be effective immediately, and the wastewater treatment plant shall be allowed immediately to accept water from vertical natural gas while drilling.
Discussion?
Yeah, we have Vicki and Jeff.
Vicki, you might want to go over to this podium, the speaker doesn't work.
I think I'd love to.
No, please, please come over, someone.
Jeff, you've been a plant engineer down there for how long?
I've been an operator down there better than 20 years now.
And how long have we been taking this well water that we're talking about?
Probably about 12, 13 years.
Uh huh. And have you seen any adverse effects on any of the plant's operation out of this water?
No, I haven't.
Water going into the stream?
We have seen high chlorides go in there, which was mentioned. We discharged into a Class C stream, and there are no limits on chlorides into that stream. So it's not an exceedance on our behalf. And we do self-impose a limit on that, on the well developers that do haul to us.
Right. And what's that amount? Like 1% or less of 1% that we can take?
I believe the number was about half of 1%.
We've never taken more than half a percent of water.
Okay. And a question come up in high loads from rainstorms or whatever, what happens in that instance?
Under any high flow event, we don't allow any discharge of any outside truck waste into our facility. Everybody's cut off at that point. We treat everything that we can, and then we have an overflow facility onsite where we chlorinate and dechlorinate before that is discharged to the river.
But in a high storm, the well guys will not bring water in?
Right. They're, they're shut right down.
Right. And a lot of that well water isn't it, a lot of local well water that comes in?
A good portion of it is.
And that's from the wells that are already established? I think there's over 250 wells just in Keegah County?
Right. You know?
And that water right now is being trucked to Ohio?
From what I've heard, yes.
You've heard conversation this evening about the company who is in violation. Did they, did they dump their, their hauler, did it go into our facility?
They do haul, they did haul to our facility previous to that occasion. The way that the testing is done, it's done on a well out in the field, and those test results are analyzed, and that's what we review for the permit. They don't come in with a load of well water where we take a sample, as was discussed earlier, and we run that to the lab and we wait two weeks. This stuff is done previous to all of that.
Is there documentation of this?
Hold on, please. No, 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 sorry, sir.
I'll ask that question, sir. Who does that test? Who does that?
It's done by an independent lab.
Okay. So it's not a city lab, it's not a oil company or gas drilling lab, it's an independent lab?
Sir, you're out of order. Sorry. Well, it's not your job.
We're not going to go into conspiracy theories here, but let's go into, and I'm going to ask you a question. You have a 4A license?
That's correct.
What's a 4A license?
The licensing procedure is similar to like an engineering license in New York State. You have to have so many educational hours in the field before you're even eligible to take a test. Right now, I believe it's somewhere around seven or eight college level courses dedicated just to wastewater treatment. Then you need so many hours or years actually of training in the facility before you're even eligible to get that license to sit in on the test.
That's the highest license in New York State?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
With a bachelor's degree, I believe it's two and a half years' experience plus all the classwork and the education.
And more?
To get to that point.
And more importantly, you have on-the-job experience, which is worth more than a degree?
Correct.
Okay. Now, radioactivity, all right? Do we have a problem with high radioactivity in our waste, wastewater?
I've never seen it, but Vicki can?
We actually are not required to sample for radiation. We did last, last year, and it was not found. I did look in the regs, the new regs that are coming out, or the, I'm sorry, the SGEIS. It is going to be required. When we characterize the wells, they will have to be sampled for radiation, and they may also impose a effluent sampling for our plant.
So if this ban is lifted, we will be sampling for that?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Now Vicki, didn't EPA come in and do a rigorous examination of our plant?
The EPA did come in, they checked out the plant, the labs. They went through with a portable radiation meter, did not find it in the water. The stuff I just mentioned, we actually sent offsite for analysis. This was just the EPA came in and actually did with a portable, they told us there was nothing there, or nothing that they, that was over above background.
So we had people in here looking over this plant left and right?
Yeah, the DEC's been in, EPA's been in a couple times last year. I think DEC was in twice.
Did they find us out of compliance with anything?
No, they did not.
Have we ever been fined because we were out of compliance in your 10 to 15 years that you've been here?
No.
We've never been fined?
No, we haven't.
Okay, now, we take a 124-hour sample each week, correct? And we send that to a third party, which is EPA certified?
Correct.
We, we take several samples each week, but you're talking about what type of sample?
Give me the samples, let's go through the samples.
Okay. And this, it depends on the type of year, so I've got three different ones here, but I'll just read this one. We take ultimate oxygen demand twice a week, suspended solids twice per week, settleable solids twice per week, I'm sorry, settleable solids three times per day, pH three times per day, nitrogen twice per week, dissolved oxygen twice per week, phosphorus twice per week, temperature three times a day, flow, we take caliform chlorine is three times per day, copper is once per month, iron is once per month, zinc is quarterly, lead is quarterly, methylene chloride quarterly, and talium in quarterly.
Now, let's go back, and I don't know if anyone heard you, the percentage, okay, of our intake is how much of our flow?
When we were receiving the well water, the highest I found between 2008 and 2011 was .5%.
Okay. Now, let's say, and there's fear, that because natural gas drilling is getting larger and larger, okay, especially in other states, that we're not going to be able to say no to the money. So let's say we want to increase that to 2 or 3%, okay? Would that be a good direction to go?
We limit ourselves, and it was alluded to earlier, it's based on the TDS, and so we limit ourselves to 90,000 gallons a day, but I don't think that we've ever taken that much. And that was recommended at, I believe, 180,000 is what we can, but we self-impose the 90,000.
So we've self-regulated to make sure that we're not taking too much of this stuff that could become a real problem? Even though we're permitted to?
TDS does pass through, we do not treat for total dissolved solids, so that's why we limit ourselves. That's our limiting factor.
Okay.
And I have analysis, a typical analysis here of a well driller, if you wanted me to go through it, because I've heard some stuff about hazardous chemicals, and I actually didn't tell him to cherry pick, and I noticed he picked the one that had the high barium that we had to write somebody up. But there's 85 different constituents on this, and there's several VOCs, and they're all under detection limits. The only things that are detected were the metals, barium, and iron.
Now, we also, we're just talking about wastewater. We also take in waste from industrial sites, correct? I don't want to start going through the companies here, okay, but we do take some of them.
Yeah, there's seven or eight of them, I believe, in the, in the City of Auburn or just outside the City of Auburn, that also have these same type of permits, but they're mostly categorical, it's called, industrial users. The well drillers are listed under significant industrial users, and it all falls under a pre-treatment program, which the EPA is the oversight, but DEC also regulates.
Okay. Now, there's a lot of different things that have been brought up tonight, and it'd take a lot of time to go over this. We have no, as a city, we have no plans of creating injection wells, all right? There's never been discussed here, we have never discussed that, that is not in our plans, all right? And as long as I'm on council, I'm sure I can speak to everyone here, that's not an area where we're going to go into. We're not going to inject this into the land. So I know that was brought up, that has never, ever been a discussion. We do not take anything from Marcellus or Utica shale, correct?
We do not, on our permit it says, and they have to certify, that nothing comes from Marcellus shale.
All right. So let's be clear on this, because I received several phone calls this weekend, okay, and all of them from out of Auburn. I had one person from Norway call me, and once I explained to them that there's no Marcell, yes, Norway, no Marcellus or Utica shale, okay, they said, we were well, we were not informed, okay? They were misinformed. They thought that we were taking this stuff in at high amounts. Now, how much, what's our capacity?
We are actually a 12 million gallon day, 12 million gallon per day plant, however, we generally only see about an average of 8 million gallons a day, so we have another 4 million gallons of capacity.
Okay. So we're not at full capacity. Now, other areas in this state, treatment plants, don't take this because they are at full capacity, correct?
I believe so, from talking to the DEC and reading the SGEIS. I spoke to DEC a couple weeks ago, and they told me that they thought there was only four plants that could accept this in New York State.
Now, someone brought up the question, 15 months of no testing. Can we, is there any truth to that?
I don't think it was 15 months of no testing. I think that was in the beginning of our pre-treatment program, when the well water was discovered, it was in a different category, and it was brought into the pre-treatment program. So it was in the beginning stages when everything was getting developed. I mean, you don't just turn a light on and do something like that. There's a lot of procedures to go through, paperwork has to go through our city attorney, a lot of things have to happen before the testing is done.
Okay. Any more questions?
Could you describe the activity that happens with the wastewater as it comes in? Basically, go through it stepwise.
Well, the wastewater is deposited right at the head of our plant, and from there, it goes to our effluent building where there's a trash rack, which catches heavy debris, and it goes through bar screens, which filters the system out a little bit further. From there, it goes to an aerated grit chamber, where we send a bunch of oxygen compressors through there to let all the solids deposit into those tanks, which are pumped out, and the organics typically are floated over to our primary settling tanks. And from the primary settling tanks, there's probably about a three-hour detention time where we have more settling, and where most of the sludge is deposited in there and pumped to our gravity thickener for more settling. From there, it's pumped up to our aeration tanks, which is a biological system up there.
Okay, hold it right there, it's a biological system?
Yeah.
Okay. What is the biologic, could you describe that biological system?
Basically, we supply microorganisms in this system that break down any kind of suspended solids that has made it through the primary system at that point.
Okay. At that point, with the intake of this wastewater, has there been any perturbance, disturbance, or death of that microbial ecosystem?
No. In the 20-plus years I've been there, we've never had an upset with the biological activity at the plant.
How fragile is that system?
It's very fragile. You can have an upset of gasoline entering the sewage system from an auto accident, which could possibly kill the microbes in our system.
And that would be on the order of, let's say, 20 gallons of gas to how many thousands of gallons of water?
Right. Exactly.
So it's a highly sensitive bi- microbial ecosystem?
That's correct. And it's something that we balance to keep alive day in and day out.
And there's nothing?
To clean the water.
There's never been an issue?
No, there hasn't. No.
Mayor, just have a few things that I'd like to talk, do you all say, Counselor? One thing that I just want to make perfectly clear is, I campaigned, and it's been an ongoing issue with me, is to look at every revenue stream that the city can possibly look at to undo some of the burden that is on our taxpayers of the community. But I'm very concerned on looking forward on the water we're taking in, and I hope, hopefully, we can take in water, safe water, treat it. But one of the things that I want to look at is, do we have safeguards in place? Do we have discussion on this? And we're just not rushed into making a decision without good public input? And we don't look at the procedures that we have at our sewage treatment plant to make sure the safeguards are in place? And are we doing testing? I'd like to see us test every truck that comes into the plant. And I know people say this is difficult, and we can't do that, but I think we can, because we don't want to have an accident that will cause us millions of dollars and problems down the road. You just talked about that it's a very sensitive system, and if something was introduced into that system, we would have a problem. And I'd almost like to see us, if we could talk to an independent environmental agency that would come in, or company that would come in and test these trucks at certain days as they come in. But every truck is tested somewhat, so that we can make sure that there's no problem that this water that's entering the plant is not going to cause a problem to the plant, it's not going to cause a problem to the environment, and it's not going to cause a problem to the general public. I think that's first and foremost. And I also think that we got to have good public debate on this. This was brought up last week, six days ago. I think we have to have a good, long public debate on where we're going to go with this, and if we have good positive feedback, and we can answer some of the questions that I've brought up, some of the safeguards and procedures that we put in, that I have no problem going forward with it. But until then, I think that that needs to happen.
Something we do. Something that will be required before we can bring this back into the plant is a new headworks analysis. They're supposed to be done every five years if you're in the pre-treatment program we're due. And that tells us what we can and can't take at the plant, and the limits that we need to follow. Also, with that will be the characterization of the wells to include the radon. So we do not sample each truck.
Is that why you said, you know, I asked last week, the DEC, somebody from DEC would be here, and you said that they'd have to come in and review the plant, correct?
They will review, first of all, the headworks analysis, make sure it's done right, and that's the engineering study of the plant, which was referred to earlier. And then they also will look at the characterization before they will even allow this stuff to come in.
Then should we be waiting for them, with determinations they're going to come up with, and how they recommend us to move forward into accepting this kind of water?
We currently are in the pre-treatment program, so I, at least now, I believe we would be, we would get this again. I can't speak for DEC or the EPA, but I do have to do a new headworks analysis. If they find something different than they found last time, they certainly could say, no, you can't bring it in. We also have to sample each well. If they find something different than they did last time, they certainly can say, you can't bring water from that well, or that well, or that well.
And how long does that take? How long does that process take?
The headworks analysis, if we can get somebody in next week, would probably take a week, and then the report would probably come out a month after that or so, and then the DEC has to prove it.
So before we take anything, and that's got to be done?
Yes.
So whether we lift the moratorium or not, that's still, that's still going to have to be done?
Correct.
Right. So all the safeguards are there?
Unfortunately, they're not, because we don't know what they are.
What's that?
Unfortunately, they're not, we don't know what they are.
John, we've had 10 years of safeguards. You say rushed into this, no, we rushed into the moratorium. That's what we rushed into, 10 to 14 years of a clean bill of health.
But unfortunately, the business has changed a lot, and there's a lot going on out there in our area that has changed tremendously in the last two to three years.
That's not?
So I think we need to, I think we need to.
John, that would be the easy decision, okay? But if you look at it from this point, if you're going to take this stance, and if you guys are going to take this stance, we better not take anything from the hospital, we better shut that down right now. We better shut down what we take from the prison, we better shut that down right now. You better shut down everything we take from the manufacturing. If you want to be consistent with your position, then you should be out there demonstrating against those entities.
No, they're in the community.
Because the stuff they come in is more toxic than the wastewater.
They're in the community.
Okay? But it doesn't matter, it's more toxic.
Mr. Foster, you're out of order.
Counselor, I just, I'd like to say one thing. My stance tonight is, I hope we can do the right thing, put the safeguards in place so we can move forward into accepting the water and creating revenue stream. I just want to make sure that we take a step back, and we look and make sure that all safeguards are in place, so that we protect the residents of this community, and we wouldn't have any kind of a problem down the road.
John, they've been protected for 15 years, nothing has happened, okay? That's, that's the truth. I mean, we're looking at pure speculation, but there's no specifics.
Can anybody guarantee us that nothing's going to happen in the future?
John, you can't guarantee anything in this world. Because something's not perfect, doesn't mean you get rid of it. There's no such thing as a perfect system.
My point is being mad is, we always need to, and look at what safeguards we have, or what procedures we have, we always have to update those, because things are changing constantly. That's the point that I'm trying to make, is that we need to take a step back, make sure that everything's in place, make sure technologies change, and DEC might have new regulations for us. And once all that's in place, I have no problem moving forward with things.
John, okay, and I'm glad you said that, but we can't accept anything until DEC and EPA approve that. So we're going to get all that, but we can't accept anything until that's done. So that means all the safeguards are in place.
Then why don't we wait till DEC comes out?
It makes no difference, John. It makes no difference. If you're willing to accept it, which I think is what you're saying, to accept it once the DEC and EPA come in, so you're willing to accept it then?
As long as the city, as I feel confident, the city's got good safeguards in effect inwards. Sampling every vehicle, every truck that comes in the city, I would have no problem moving forward.
Will we be doing that? Don't we do that?
We can take two approaches. We could put in tanks and take the tank water, store it until we can get test results, or we can do a screening level test of conductivity, which would give us some indication at a high level of whether that waste was consistent with what was coming from the wells.
And that's fine, we can do all those things, but the point is, we're still going to be having the wastewater in, we're still going to be bringing that in, and there's still going to be protest. It's still going to happen.
That's good. We're going to have a good debate on both sides of the issue. I want to take a step back, take this thing slowly, so that we'll make sure that we're doing the right thing. And Doug, I'd just like to ask you something else. Could we have some company come in and take this over, where testing's done, and maybe we allow it Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or three hours in the morning, and a company's onsite to do that type of testing? Could that happen?
I defer to Vicki and Jeff, but I think some of those tests take days to accomplish.
Okay. See, this is the dialogue I'd like to see happen, that we have good open debates about what we can do and what we can't do, so that these procedures are put in effect.
Our own lab can sample certain things like TDS and the settleable solids and stuff like that, but the things for that, you would want tested, that they actually do it at the wells themselves, you would have to send a third party.
Could a third party come to Auburn and set up a, we'll just call it temporary?
Certainly could, but it's not in my budget right now.
No, I understand that, but as you indicated the other day, our rates are low compared to what other municipalities are charging for, to take this well water in, and maybe we could incorporate that into the, to the rate somehow, just to make sure it's screened properly.
I suppose anything could be done.
Sure.
Vicki, again, before we can even, even if this was lifted tonight, before we can do, we have to go through the head and analysis. The DEC has to come in, basically give us the, our annual inspection sticker, pretty much, or inspection sticker.
They will probably come in anyways, they, I think they came in last year on June.
Okay.
The EPA, it's actually an EPA program, so they have to, they have to approve it, and the DEC has to approve it.
Okay, with, so until that happens, nothing can be taken in regardless? Is that correct?
We won't take anything.
We won't take anything in?
For the new headworks analysis.
Okay, so say this is lifted tonight, we don't take it in, they change the regulations at that time, or any time down the road, by permits and such, that will be imposed upon us, is it not correct?
We have to, anything that they impose on us, we have to follow.
So at any level of testing or concerns that the DEC wants to have, or the EPA wants to have added to this, certainly would be pretty much an automatic inclusive?
That's correct.
And currently, again, with what regulations we have at the moment, we are in full compliance and have been in full compliance?
Yes, we have.
To compare it to Anadaga Lake, all right, where toxins- To compare it to Anadaga Lake, all right, where toxins were just dumped in there, okay? Irresponsibly so, and it is a travesty, okay? Untreated. To compare this to the Love Canal, where they buried, you know, was it 21 tons of toxic waste? All right, it's, it's apples and oranges. All right, there's no comparison. We aren't doing any of this. Okay, the DEC and EPA did not approve what was going on at the Love Canal. The DEC and EPA did not approve what was going on in Anadaga Lake. Okay, they didn't know about it.
They weren't even checking.
Okay? Exactly.
They weren't in existence.
That's my point. They are in existence now, okay? And we go through all the hoops, okay? We make sure, the strictest EPA regulations are in New York State, okay? We work under them. We abide by them. All right, this isn't the toxic waste that you hear of in Bradford, Pennsylvania, in Bradford County. And there are some bad things that are happening there, all right? This isn't Bradford County. We're not drilling, we're not taking any of that stuff. All right, we're taking stuff from, from the Trenton Blackwater River Formation, okay? And from the local wells here. All right, I mean, why don't we complain about the 800,000 tons of salt that was dumped on the road last winter? It's the same stuff, but it's not treated. Okay, it is the same. All right, and we can get experts on both sides of it, all right? And then we can bring movie producers and do the counter to this. All right, I don't pay any attention to that, okay? I trust the staff, they have over 80 years of experience, okay? My faith is with them. Okay, and I'm not going to disrespect them on pure speculation. This is based on facts. This is based on 10 to 15 years of experience, okay, of running a healthy treatment plant. Somebody asked the question earlier, can, is our treatment plant made for that? Yes, I called the engineer myself twice and asked him that same question. And he said, well, what are you taking in? And I explained to him what we're taking. He says, well, it depends on how much your overflow is, are you near your max? I said, it's 0.5%. And I will quote him, it is totally irrelevant, excuse me, the amount is totally insignificant. Okay, so it's easy to play on, and I'm going to take full responsibility for this. I'm the one that proposed this resolution. I have two children and a wife, and my parents live in this town, okay? Some of you, many of you don't live in this town. I do, okay? I'm going to raise my children in this town, and I'm willing to suffer the consequences because I know there's not, okay? We can play fear games with anything, okay? Truck, we've heard trucks rolling over, we've heard, you know, earthquakes, we're injecting it to the, we're going to inject this into the ground. That's all, we've never mentioned that. No one's ever brought this up. If we're afraid of trucks turning over, let's not have any gas stations here in Auburn. Trucks come here all the time. Let's close the landfill. Let's tell the hospital, we're not taking your waste. Oh, they're local. Okay, so we can have local pollutants. If these drillers move to Auburn, then they're local, then it's okay. Is that what some of you are saying? I don't think you're saying that. Toxins are toxins. The hospital's toxic, so do we still take their stuff? So let's shut them down.
Let me ask, if...
Hold on, just, Counselor, Counselor Rezika, please. Go ahead.
Okay. The big point is, a good majority of this is local, locally produced well water that comes up from the gas. I'm sure if anyone who lives in the city, you heat your homes with gas. If you use electricity, a lot of electricity is generated with gas. You buy part, you go down to Walmart and buy items, a lot of that stuff has, in the production chain, uses natural gas. Natural gas is the, right now, is the cheapest form of energy. We're even looking at it on a national level of changing over from gasoline to natural gas powered cars. So if, if your object is to shut down this, this process, then I suggest you look for another way of, of living, or another lifestyle, because by closing this down, you might as well go back to the Stone Age.
Without renewables.
There is, renewable energy is not going to provide enough energy for the demand. You can't, this is not a debate of energy.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've heard you, we're very polite, we listen to each and every one of you. This is not an open and debate. This is a debate between the council at this point. We enjoy your comments, but not at this time. Please. Either that, or we're going to have to leave, ask everyone to leave, and we'll continue our meeting. So, thank you. Counselor Rezika, please.
So, so what I'm saying is, it's such an ingrained part of our lifestyle now. You can't have your cake and eat it too. So, do you make the decision to say, no more wastewater, well drilling water of any kind? Well, as I said, you might as well turn your lights off, go out, cut wood, you might as well go back a couple hundred years as far as your lifestyle. Unless you're willing to make that change. If you want to change it, truly want to change it, then whatever is in the stream of natural gas used in either heating, or producing, or in lighting, or whatever, boycott it. Or approach the DEC and the EPA and put pressure on them. You fix it everywhere then. But we are, as long as we remain in full compliance, the duty of a wastewater treatment plant is to treat waste and discharge it into the environment in a responsible and safe manner, and we're doing that. I firmly believe, now, I signed the petition, and I'll be first one to admit that was going around when I thought that there was horizontal fracking water that we brought here. Well, I've since educated myself, and I've found out from the analysis that I've seen, from the well water intakes, that it's very benign, and we do more to Counselor Smith's point, in poisoning our water with brine that runs off from the roads. I have a hard time saying that we won't take this in, but yet we'll let it run off in our roads and our drains, totally untreated. Even so, some level treatment is better than no level treatment.
Vicky.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Vicky, backing up just a little bit, you said that, I believe the term used was the headworks, when the DEC comes in. What starts that particular action by DEC? Our action, or is it, is it a timed event, or how does that work?
It's generally our action, but when I asked the DEC about bringing back the well water, they told me I will be required to do a headworks, a new headworks analysis.
Okay. And at the same time, there may be stipulations in there that we have to follow. In other words, if we were to do, stop the ban this evening, or drop the ban, we still have to go through the headworks inspection, and they could come up with additional items that we may have to follow. Am I correct, or?
That is true.
Okay. And at that point, it would still be council's call, whether the council, if there was an associated cost, for argument's sake, if there was associated cost, it would still be the council's decision whether to go forward with it or not. Am I correct?
I believe so, because if they're going to ask for us to do extra sampling, or put in a tank, or whatever, I would have to get the money, and so you would have to prove it.
Correct.
So I just, I'd just like to caution us and try to, I think we should table this until they have their, their study done, so that, I'd like to see that every truck be tested, and maybe that would be their recommendation. I think that that's important, that that happens. So I think that it would be smart to look at this once they come up with their study.
Whatever they come back with, we have to do anyway.
I understand that, but there might be things that we want to add to that, Matt. Like I said, I want to...
Then we can add to it.
I can say some safeguards that I'd like to see.
We can always do that.
And instead of having a double vote on it, we'd vote on it when...
Makes no difference. We can add to it. We can always add to it.
That's all I'm saying, is we've, we table it, just hear me out. We table it so we can get public input, number one. Number two, is when DEC makes the recommendations to the city, we can also get more public input on it, and then go move forward. And if we feel confident with that, and the public feels good with it, and then we can move forward with it, so.
Public can come here anytime they want, and I encourage that. And how may we may disagree with them? I respect the passion that they have, but they can come here every Tuesday, or, excuse me, Thursday night. They can call my house as frequently as they want, okay? We've heard the public input on this. But this is nothing new. This was not done, and we need to be clear about this. This didn't come about because we had a Chernobyl in Auburn, or because we had a Anadaga Lake experience here, or because of some huge violation, all right? That's not why this moratorium was put in effect, okay? It has nothing to do with failure on their part, failure, a breakdown of our facility. So really, what do we have to prove? We've already proved everything.
But I'm saying, we're going to make the same mistake that we did back in July, when there wasn't good public input on it. We didn't have a good dialogue on it. It was pushed through, and the same thing seems like it's going to happen tonight, where you're not having good dialogue, you're not having good input from the, from the...
Mayor, or, excuse me, John, there was four months of dialogue.
Well, I'm just saying, Matt, it was pushed through, and there wasn't good dialogue throughout.
So you were against that vote?
No, I'm not saying I was against anything. I'm just saying, I'd like to have good public input about it. There's some, be some things that I'd like to see, to have safeguards put in effect for the public safety of our residents of this community. And I think that every truck should be tested when it comes into community, and we should have somebody doing that.
John, we all agree on public safety, and that's what you guys have done, okay? And that's what we will continue to do. And we followed all DEC, EPA standards. I'll just read one more item by the lab technician. "Our plant runs on a system, which we've already mentioned, which is a delicate balance of the primary water microscopic bacteria that further cleans the water by means of ingestion. If dangerous chemicals, even in minute amounts, were coming in, we would have an upset consisting of black masses floating on top of the water. According to the test," this is our lab technician, quote, "we have never seen these." The safeguards are put in, we have done our job in providing safety, we've monitored. Can we do more? We can always look to do more. But again, there's nothing that's totally safe in this world, from flying in the plane, ask our city manager, from crossing the street, okay? There's nothing for sure, there's nothing positive. All right, so that's all I have to say.
Counselor Camaro, is it, do you want to put that in form of motion table? Is that what you're...
Just one question. Vicky, why don't you walk through the safeguards that you believe when a truck pulls up at Sewage Treatment Plant? What safeguards are in place that say that that truck doesn't have some kind of chemicals in it that are going to disrupt the sewage treatment plant?
Well, first of all, before that truck even gets there, there's a permit, there's a headworks analysis, characterization of the wells. There is a permit that says that they cannot bring certain things. Then, when the truck gets there, the hauler has to certify that it did come from that well. And then, we treat it. And we, we actually test effluents at the plant, and I read those off earlier.
But it's spot, correctly? You do spot testing on this?
We don't do for every truck.
Okay. So every truck that comes in is not tested?
Exactly. Some, lots of trucks do not get tested.
What would you say, do we test any of them at all?
We are only required to test once per quarter for each different one.
Well, that's one of my concerns, that we just, we test these vehicles, because so much going on in the industry right now, it's changing so much, and this water's being transported all over the place. We just, I just don't want to see something happen at the sewage treatment plant that would disrupt and have public...
I'd just like to add something, and this is right from the SGEIS, that says, although the department's regulations do not classify drilling and production waste as hazardous, like all waste, they must be handled and disposed of in accordance with applicable regulatory requirements. So it's not even classified as hazardous.
What's not classified as hazardous?
The water that comes from the drilling.
That we take. And what's that according to?
This is in the SGEIS, New York State DEC SGEIS.
But could hazardous materials enter into one of those trucks, though? It could happen, couldn't it?
I suppose anything could happen. We also take water from several industries, we sample them quarterly also.
So if you want to increase on them as well?
Maybe we need to look into that, sure.
Okay, see what happens to them.
Pardon me?
See what happens to them.
What do you mean, see what, I don't...
See what happens to their business.
No, I'm saying, maybe as a city, we should be testing the water when it comes in to make, see what happens, that, that there's no problems with that water.
Jeff, we do test them. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
I just would like to add that a part of our pre-treatment program, these companies all adhere to that document that they sign and have reviewed, and they're under scrutiny for that document. They can be held accountable by the city with administrative fines. After that, they can be held accountable with civil fines. And then after that, they can be held accountable with criminal fines if we do find something in the system. And that's something we look for.
Mayor, I'm going to entertain a motion that we table this until the DEC study comes back to the city.
So you're making a motion?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion on the motion. Okay, the vote, be yes to table it, no to not table it. Clerk of you will call the roll, please.
Counselor Greeney?
No.
Counselor Camaro?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Rezika?
No.
Mayor Quill?
Yes. Motion is defeated. Counselor, any further discussion on, on the resolution number 20?
I just think that it's important that we have a good public input on it, that safeguards are considered by staff and by council. We look for public safety as a number one priority. And if those things were talked about, and we had good discussion upon it, I would support it, but I would want to make sure that good safeguards were put in effect.
I mean, we'll be supporting this because we have great safeguards. You guys have done your job. That's why we have a clean bill of health. That's why our treatment plant is, is running at the capacity that it's running. There have been no ill effects. Cement walls breaking down because of this has been noted priorly. So again, I commend you on the work that you do, and you continue with it. We have a, just, we have a $2 million consent order, correct?
That is correct.
And that was because of what?
It's related to our overflow retention facility and has nothing to do with the main plant.
Okay, and that was, that happened because of oil or grease, right?
Oil and grease, a chlorine, and a, they said BOD and TSS, but that, they later rescinded that as not, no finding.
Oil and grease. So we got another group to go after now.
I, too, looking at this issue, and I've analyzed it myself, I did a great deal of research, I spent several sleepless nights looking at this. And my neighbor probably seen the light burning at my house, well, maybe not, pretty late. I looked at everything, I've, I've seen the, the copies of the results of intake. I, we have an agency, which is, agencies, I should say, which is the DC, DEC and the EPA, that are basically the gatekeepers and the, I'm going to say the protectors of us all. We have to trust them. Regardless, it's a government, it's an, it's an agency that's put in place for this. We are in full compliance with, with the regulations. We are doing nothing that's detrimental to our, our plant. The history has proven itself. I, I see no harmful effect with this intake.
Sir, please. Please, please. Counsel, is there any further discussion?
No.
Clerk of you will call the roll, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.